I have six thirty. Are you folks ready to go?
Sure am.
Uh, Scott, are we good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if I could indulge you to shut the door. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Currier. I live here in Nashua. I serve you as a chairman of the Nashua Zoning Board. Uh, to my right, to your left, is Mr. J. P. Boucher. He's our vice chair and acting clerk tonight, because Mary Ellen is on vacation. Also have members Rob Shaw and Steve Lionel. To my left is, uh, Mr. Carter Falk. He's, uh, serves on staff as a de- deputy planning manager. A couple of things. If, uh, I, if I could ask you to silence or turn off your cell phones during the proceeding of the meeting, I'd appreciate it. Uh, if you didn't know, these meetings are recorded actually in three venues. They're recorded visually. So the cameras are rolling now, and I need to thank Scott behind the door, who's gonna capture all the action. And it'll probably be replayed in a couple of days on, uh, channel sixteen. Uh, this meeting is also recorded on audio. Uh, it's digitally being recorded. In a few days, you can listen to this at gonashua.com, and you kinda click through to find the ZBA. And also, there'll be a written transcript of, uh, tonight's discussion, and that will serve actually as the legal, uh, recording. So because, uh, we record the meetings, and it's completely transparent, uh, I, I asked that only one person speaks at a time, and that person speaks into a microphone. And I also asked who's ever speaking to address the board. So in other words, if you have questions, say for an applicant or someone else, uh, we ask that you address the board, and we'll get those questions answered. I've been at meetings where it's in this fashion, where you address the board, or you address each other, and, and I, I think this works much better. Uh, and a little bit about us, we're just laypeople. We're citizens here in the city of Nashua, who have an interest in serving on government. We're appointed by the mayor and approved by the Board of Aldermen. Uh, and I know some folks here have been here a lot and know all the rules, but I'd like to read through the rules, uh, for any newcomers who are either in the audience or, uh, or watching on TV. Uh, first, uh, I'll talk about, we'll be hearing, uh, tonight both variances and special exceptions. And for those who aren't aware, those are variances to this Nashua Big Book of Code, or special exceptions, which are a little different than a variance. So, uh, this board doesn't write this book. This board, uh, it is the Board of Aldermen and the mayor who ultimately approve this book. And there's lots of little details in there, and the state of New Hampshire has enacted boards like this, the zoning board of adjustment, to hear, uh, requests for deviations. So there's two types of deviations we're gonna hear tonight. Uh, the first is, uh, for variances, and I'll briefly tick through the five criteria. Uh, number one, that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three, substantial justice is done. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And number five, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So that's the five criteria that at least three members here tonight need to be satisfied to, to vote favorably for a request for a variance. Uh, we're also hearing tonight a special exception, and the special exception has slightly different criteria, and I'll read that. Number one is that the use is listed in the table of uses, and our special exception tonight is listed in the table of uses. And what the table of uses is, is in this book, there's a list of approved special exceptions, one of which is working within a wetland, for example. So, uh, the second of five special exception requirements is that the requested use or activity will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Number three, again, for a special exception, is a requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system, or any other municipal system. Number four is that any special exception regulations, uh, set forth in the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And for example, uh, if we have a wetland request before us, which we do tonight, there's criteria for a wetland special exception that needs to be satisfied. And then the fifth, uh, requirement, uh, for a special exception is that the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood. So that's the five criteria for a special exception. And then, uh, the other, uh, rules I'd like to tick through is how this board, uh, hears cases. Each case tonight, and there's four cases, and if folks don't have them, there's a list of the, tonight's agenda on that back table, so if you don't have one and wanna get one, feel free to do so. Um, so there's two components to the, each case tonight. The first is a public hearing, and the public hearing is where we hear from you, the public. And the applicant will speak first. The applicant has up to fifteen minutes to present their case. We have a clock here that'll tick down from fifteen minutes. The light'll be green for the first fourteen minutes. It'll be yellow from minute fourteen to fifteen, and then, and then it'll turn red if you're still speaking at that fifteen-minute mark. Uh, it's likely that folks up here will have questions, uh, so be ready for that. Uh, after the applicant has spoken, anybody else who wants to speak in favor of the application will have up to five minutes to, uh, provide their testimony to us. After all testimony in favor of an application has been heard, anyone with questions, concerns, or opposition will have up to five minutes to present their, uh, points. If there is opposition, then the applicant will have five minutes after the opposition to address the opposition. And if there is app- opposition after the applicant has spoken, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition, uh, will have the final five minutes. Uh, and then the public hearing portion of the case will be closed, and the public meeting component will start. And that's where the four of us will deliberate and likely come to a decision. Uh, a few other points. Uh, if any aggrieved party, uh, if there is an aggrieved party by a decision we make, the next step for you would be to request a rehearing, and you have up to thirty days to do that. And if you're interested, you could contact Mr. Falk tomorrow. And also, analogously, uh, any, uh, case that is approved or denied, uh, just be ready, because there is that thirty-day window of appeal. And if this board were to get a rehearing request, and if this board, uh, felt merit and sought to rehear the case, that decision would be stayed. So, uh, with that, I think I've gone through all of, uh, the rules. Any questions up here? Are there any questions from anyone in, in the audience? Seeing none, I think we'll kick things off with case number one. Uh, if the applicant for case number one would like to come to the microphone. Uh, and also, as you come to present or speak, if you're, the spelling of your name isn't obvious, I might ask you to spell it, because we, we certainly wanna get it right for the record. So, uh, and let me just read into the record. Case number one, uh, the owner is the city of Nashua. The address is Ten Whipple Street, uh, specifically at the vicinity of Ledge Street and the Everett Street intersection. This is a request for a special exception to work in the seventy-five-foot prime wetland buffer of the Nashua Canal to construct a pedestrian bridge to cross the Nashua Canal to connect to the Mine Falls Park Trail System. Hi, good evening. If you could give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening. Uh, my name's Sean James. It's, uh, S.E.A.N. And I'm with Hoyle Tanner and Associates. I'm not a resident of Nashua.
Hi, welcome. And, uh, would you like to walk us through your application?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, so we were retained, Hoyle Tanner was retained by the, uh, city of Nashua, and representing the city is, uh, Sarah Marchand's here tonight as well. Uh, we were retained by the city to, uh, design this project, which is a transportation alternative project, which generally is, um, projects that don't involve vehicular traffic. The general idea of the tra- the project is to connect the Heritage Trail down Everett Street, cross Ledge Street, and into the park. Now, I do have, it was in the application, I do have extra copies of figure one. It's the last page, I think, from there. I can bring those up if that'd be all right, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, if you'd like to walk on up and pass those around, remembering that when you're not at the mic, we can't hear you, but thank you for bringing those to us.
Same size. The same size.
Thank you.
So the, this is a plan view, and it's, and essentially what we are here tonight for, as you mentioned, was the special exception for, uh, the wetlands, prime wetlands and the buffer. So the project itself, which is shown in the plan, this is, uh, at the Mine Falls end of it. It involves construction of a new pedestrian bridge over the canal. So that's where we come into the, the prime wetlands part of the project. What we're proposing for the project is, um, to support the bridge on helical piles. You could think of it like a big screw. Screw it into the earth, and then they pick up the load of the bridge. The reason we're looking to do that is to minimize the impacts in the area. Instead of doing a lot of excavation, uh, having a lot of impact, we're trying to limit the impacts as much as we can in the area. Um, the type of structure we're proposing is a steel truss. That's also consistent with the area. There's already, um, one in Mine Falls, and it's the history of Nashua. There's several examples that have crossed the canal and other areas, so it'd be a prefabricated steel truss is, is the type of bridge we're looking at. The project doesn't create any additional parking. What it entails is a ramp at the Heritage Trail to get you down Everett Street. Go along the road. It's just gonna be paint, basically, on the pavement to guide you to Ledge Street. There'll be a regulated crossing, um, at Ledge Street, and then we'll take you into the park with a small amount of pavement to get to the bridge, and then enter Mine Falls Park. So the project really has no effect on traffic or traffic congestion. As I mentioned, we're, we're not adding any parking. We're not adding tracula- traffic. It's all vehicular and, and bicycle traffic. The project itself, we've had two public information meetings. One was in this building. Uh, one was in the PAL Center near the project. Uh, generally had favorable support for the project, um, in both of those. We've also previously gone on June sixth to the Conservation Commission. We had an initial meeting with them. Went back to the Conservation Commission on June nineteenth, uh, for a site walk, and then a second, uh, meeting on June nineteenth, which they had a favorable recommendation of the, of the project at that point. So that's the process we've been through. As far as the project itself, and some of the criteria you, you mentioned and you look at, again, we're trying to be the least damaging. We're following all the existing pavements, so there's no impact, really, until you get to the park, which is what's shown here in the picture. Uh, we add a small amount of pavement, uh, which is in the gray. So we have different types of impacts. The, the gray represents permanent buffer impacts. And then there's two type of hatches, either temporary wetland impact or temporary buffer impact. So we have, we have both. Generally, where it's, it's a buffer impact, a little bit of the wetland impact. So again, I mentioned, we use the helical piles to, to minimize our impacts there. Uh, as far as mitigating what, the work we're doing, uh, there are invasive species along the wall, the retaining wall. Uh, there's five. A couple are bittersweet, Japanese barberry, uh, and three others. So as part of the project, uh, we'd be directing the contract to remove those within the, uh, the impact areas we have. That was part of what we talked about with the Conservation Commission as far as mitigation. Uh, the use of the bridge, the purpose of the whole project is to gain additional access at that end of the park for, uh, residents in the area, particularly the tree streets, neighborhoods. Um, we did check with the natural heritage inventory. There's no rare endangered species there. On the federal side, the lo- northern long-eared bat did come up as a potential, uh, in the area, so we will minimize any tree clearing or, uh, activities within the timeframes to, to avoid impact to that on the federal level. As far as the, um, temporary impacts and wetland impacts, this is all funded. It's, is, there's three funding sources. There's, uh, largely it's federal, run through the New Hampshire DOT, and then the twenty percent is on the, the, uh, the city level. However, the regulations that we're gonna be following are New Hampshire DES and New Hampshire DOT. So all the temporary erosion control will follow all the New Hampshire DES standards and New Hampshire DOT standards during construction. Uh, really, we have fairly minimal impacts. The values are on the, on the sheet there. I won't read them off again, but, so we're not gonna really impact or impair the, the wetland capacity there. The stability of the bank, again, we don't see any issues there. On the, uh, east side of the Ledge Street side, there's a stone retaining wall there. We'll be behind that. Again, we're driving, we're doing the helical piles, so we don't impact the wall or the bank there. Uh, and there'll be some stone around the abutment. On the west side or the, or the park side, uh, again, we'll have a minimal concrete abutment surrounded by some stones so that we don't, uh, impact. Any temporary impacts will be, um, you know, addressed by the contract, and we'll have a little bit of stone there for permanent impacts. Uh, as far as bank, and then, really, as far as absorption of water in the air, it's very minimal impact. The only real permanent, uh, change is the, the little bit of pavement we have, and, um, you know, the water on the bridge would, would sheet off the bridge. So, that's generally an overview of it. You know, the, the criteria specifically mentioned as well is, you know, it is listed in the table of uses. Uh, we addressed the traffic. I didn't mention utilities. There's no effect at all on utilities. We're not doing any changes, uh, to those. Um, and I don't believe there's any regulations or, uh, character of the air that we're adversely affecting. So, so with that, I can open up to any, any questions you may have.
Uh, questions for Mr. James?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Uh, it's actually not about specifically the wetland impact, but, uh, the, the path from the trail down Everett Street, is that gonna be a, a separate path? Or is that gonna be like a, kind of a painted way, or is that gonna be on the sidewalk? I was just curious.
Yeah, it'd be a, a painted way. We'd, we'd call it a shared-use shoulder, so it's gonna be delineated delineated with pavement markings for, uh, pedestrians and bicyclists. It won't be a raised sidewalk.
All right. And then, like, uh, where, where that kind of brickwork is with some parked benches. I gotta tell ya, I didn't notice that was there till I did a site walk this week. How long has that been there?
I, I, I'm not sure.
Okay, it's...
Sarah's indicating it's been there a long time.
Okay, guess I just haven't noticed it going by. And then the other, uh, question is, uh, the Conservation Commission mentioned about, uh, bollards or bollards to prevent ATVs, or disencourage that. And was, were you aware of that in a letter? Were you okay with that? Was that gonna be placed there?
Right. Do you wanna address that one, Sarah?
Good evening. For the record, Sarah Marchand, Community Development Director. Yes, the Conservation Commission had a concern about the potential for ATVs or other motorized vehicles to use the bridge to get into the park. They already have some concerns of that, and so their recommendation was to add bollards. Um, I, as long as they're removable bollards, um, Fire Department has expressed their interest in being able to get some of their equipment over this to be able to rescue people easier. And so, um, as long as they're removable bollards, they don't have any issues with that.
Thank you. Um, any other questions for Ms. Marchand or Mr. James? I, I think we're all set, so you could have a seat, see what happens. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed pedestrian cross at Ledge and Everett? Is there anybody with questions, concerns, opposition? Questions, concerns, or opposition? You have, uh, we have a fella here. If you'd like to come to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address, and let us know, uh, what's on your mind?
Good evening. My name is Richard Gillespie, and I live at fifteen Spencer Drive in Nashua. I'm a longtime member of the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee. The committee has voted not in favor of this bridge, and has the following concerns. It is our opinion the bridge at this location will have a detrimental impact on the environmentally sensitive Cove area, a prime wetland located directly down the embankment from the bridge. There is already a long history of illegal activities occurring here. Under the cover of darkness and dense vegetation, a direct connection to the highest crime rate section of the city would likely increase that activity here. There are no plans to control usage of the park after posted hours. It'd be very easy for illegal activities to migrate into the park, especially after dark. There are already three entrances within one-half mile of this location. Anyone looking for exercise should be willing to walk a little bit to get there. Another entrance is not needed in this location. There are no benefits to Mine Falls Park from this entrance. We should be protecting our park resources, not exposing them to destruction. If Mine Falls Park gets a reputation for being unsafe, the city has lost a precious asset. It'll be very difficult to recover from that loss. Let's not be short-sighted. Don't sell out the park for a temporary feel-good moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any questions for Mr. Gillespie? Mr. Shaw?
I guess if you could just maybe elaborate on the, the, uh, area that you said you're concerned about from the standpoint of environmental, further environmental impact or damage?
The canal is on an embankment, or the top of the canal, and directly down to the west is the Cove area. It's a very large, um, probably twenty-acre area. The swans stay there in the summer, and, uh, it's a very pristine wetland down there. It's, has a seventy-five-foot buffer, which is probably not affected by this location, but it is directly down the slope.
Okay, so it was just that, your, your main concern is the proximity of access to that region, not that that...
And the additional activity which could occur there because of the, the people drawn to the park.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, I have a, are you all set? Um, that, I think the area you're talking about, I, I don't know if you can see this. This is like the Nashua River. And the trail is here. And I think what you're talking about is this green...
That's correct.
...area down there. Um, I guess I've never walked in that, but I kinda, I thought that was, uh, marshy. You'd almost need like a duck boat to go in there. It, it, can you walk in there? Cause I know that...
You can walk along, you can walk along the edge of it.
The, the edge of it. So just kind of like at the bottom of the embankment, around the edge of it? Okay. And I guess, uh, at times, when it hasn't been too much daylight out, and I've been, uh, on that embankment, I guess I feel it's like a catch-twenty-two situation. Uh, because I can feel at times, like, it's kinda like no way out when I'm in that area. Have to kinda keep going to get up more to the Mill Yard. And that by having the bridge there, or this proposed bridge, it, it, to me, I, it would make me feel safer, because if there was something going on, or I wanted to get away, I could get right out to the street there. I, I certainly see your point, where you're saying people can come in and get, you know, do bad activities after dark. But I also feel the other way. I think I would be more apt to be in that section of Mine Falls after dark on my bike with that bridge there. And I'm just wondering if you think there might be that, that situation also, where there'd be more people using it because of the entrance, and if there's more people using it, there's less bad things that could go on. I guess that's the way I'm seeing it, anyway.
I guess it could be interpreted that way. I, uh, personally, I would not, I'd be concerned about more people coming in there that shouldn't be there than a few people going out. I mean, if you're down there, um, it can be scary after dark. Things go on down there. There's drinking parties, uh, drug use down there, and it is a sketchy area. And you shouldn't be there after dark.
You know, I've, I've forgotten, as I, I sit here, when I, I did a site walk today by car and not by bike. But if you go west, uh, along the trail, where's the next crossing?
Along the canal, or...
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm on, you know, the, uh, north side of the canal, say where this proposed bridge would go in, but I'm going west over to like Simon Street or the, you know, the Boys...
The Seventh Street Bridge. It's behind the Boys Club?
Behind the Boys Club, okay. Yeah, I'd forgotten where the next one was, but thank you for reminding me. Um, I guess I don't have any other questions at the moment. Um, anybody else? I think we're all set. Thanks. You could have a seat. Um, I didn't know, Ms. Marchand, or if you would like to speak to the opposition we've heard?
Thank you, Sarah Marchand, again, for the record. Just very briefly, um, none of the access points have controls or locked gates after hours. There's a sign right near the entrance at the Mill Yard right here that does list the hours of the park, when it's open and closed, and how that works. Um, this, um, the wetland special exception is what's before you, as you know, and we're here to talk about wetlands impacts. Um, I will say that this grant application is a half-million-dollar grant that came from TAP, and it was supported and granted because, um, this is a direct request out of the Tree Streets Neighborhood Analysis Plan. It's supported by the master plan and the, and, um, also some of the Broad Street Parkway original international design plans. It's supported by the Conservation Commission. Police, fire, agree that they feel it would be much safer to have better access in and out of this area, and to get more eyes on it. Um, PAL and Neighbor Works are, have been showing up at many of these meetings, and even hosted a meeting in the neighborhood there to, um, talk about support for this project, and they're super excited about it going forward. So, um, that's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Ms. Marchand? No, you can have a seat. Um, Mr. Gillespie, it is your right, if you want to, you have, uh, five more minutes at the microphone to address what Ms. Marchand said, or you could rest, whatever your purview is. Would you like to speak again, or are you... Okay. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate into the microphone that Mr. Gillespie is, is, uh, is okay, and we'll... So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And, uh, any thoughts on the matter? Anybody wanna jump in? Mr. Shaw?
I, I, I'm actually very much still in favor of the application. I mean, I, I share and understand Mr. Gillespie's concerns on behalf of the committee, and I think there's, there's always going to be some of these kind of balances with what you might be doing as you increase the access to, uh, a park like this. But I think that ultimately, in some regards, it's really ends up being more about enforcement or other things if there really are issues there. And I think you actually, you know, noted, and I think rightfully, that there is going to be some, I think, some benefit of safety from having additional egress and ingress into the, into the park. So, I mean, I think as far as the application itself and the merits of, you know, really what we're truly judge, uh, being, you know, judged on as far as the special exception, it certainly seems that all of the criteria are being well met, that the least impactful methods, all the things that we, you know, really need to look for. So, uh, I think, really, in some regards, even, even these questions don't really feel like end up truly being something that we can weigh in on in terms of the ultimate merits of, of the project in the sense of what might occur otherwise from it. And I think, and I think there's actually a lot of compelling, uh, even, uh, things noted by Ms. Marchand about the, um, the support from the community, and especially the local community for this additional access, so...
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Boucher?
I would, uh, agree with Mr. Shaw.
All right. Uh, Mr. Lionel?
I, I also, uh, agree. I think this is a wonderful idea. I, again, note that what's before us is the, uh, wetlands, uh, work, and, and really, we have no purview over, uh, over other issues. Um, I think that additional access, uh, personally, I'd be delighted to use it, and the, the people in the neighborhood, uh, more people use it, the less likely there would be for, uh, sketchy characters or whatever to hang around that area. Um, I don't see anything in here that suggests that, um, the wetlands are being, uh, disturbed to any significant extent. And it looks like all of the regulations have been met, uh, so I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Um, my thoughts on it, uh, yes, we're here because the Nashville Conservation Commission has a recommendation that we're, you know, gonna add some finality to one way or the other. They're in favor of it, uh, and it, I am too. I didn't wanna lose sight of the op...
for sketchy characters or whatever to hang around that area. I don't see anything in here that suggests that the wetlands are being disturbed to any significant extent. And it looks like all of the regulations have been met. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. My thoughts on it, yes, we're here because the Nashville Conservation Commission has a recommendation that we're, you know, going to add some finality to one way or the other. They're in favor of it. And I am too. I didn't want to lose sight of the opposition and just explore that a little. But just to play that out, my experience, I think back when the River Walk was just getting going, it really wasn't that popular several years ago. And there were times that I kind of pedaled out of there very quick because there were some sketchy characters. Now it's getting used a lot more, and I don't have those same experiences. And so just to the idea of problems that might crop up, I tend to think that this will be an improvement to the area, not a setback. But again, we're here just for the special exception. And I think the special exception in the application meets all the criteria, and I'm in favor of it also. I didn't know if somebody might want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner city of Nashua, the address being ten Whipple Street in the vicinity of the Ledge Street Everett Street intersection. The request is for a special exception to work in the seventy-five foot prime wetland buffer of the Nashua Canal to construct a pedestrian bridge to cross the Nashua Canal to connect to the Mine Falls Park Trail System. And this is in the GIMU zone. It is listed in the table of uses in section 190-112. By testimony, there will be no increase in traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. While there will be an additional potential amount of pedestrian traffic, there's also efforts being put in place to provide additional safety for that pedestrian crossing as part of the project. There will not be any overloading of public water, drainage sewer, or any other municipal system. The special regulations are fulfilled by testimony. Those are the nine wetland special conditions, both by written and verbal testimony. All criteria are being met. And there will not be any negative impact or integrity effects on the, or out of character with the neighborhood or detrimental to health morals or welfares of residents. There is a communication from the Conservation Commission, from their meeting on June nineteenth, communication dated June twentieth, with two stipulations that the applicant agrees to adhering to. So we duly note and include those in this approval. I did do move to approve this application for the reasons just stated.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any questions or discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion. A show of hands in favor of the approval, that's four nothing, so that's approved. Keep in mind that there's the thirty day window of appeal, thirty calendar days starting tomorrow. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number one. Pardon?
Continue on, I'll be back in one minute.
Oh, okay. You want me to continue? Okay. We're going to keep moving on here for case number two. So I'd like to open the public hearing on case number two. I'll read it into the record. The owner is the Rita Senical Revocable Trust. The address is fifty-five Wood Street. The request is a variance to encroach nine feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback. And that's to maintain an existing shed. This is in the RA zone, Ward three. And I know Mr. Boucher said he'd be right back. If you just want to hold on a second till he comes back, if you don't mind. We won't start that clock because we want to give you the full fifteen minutes.
While he's doing that, why don't I spend some time? Can I just put a couple of things up to you?
Sure, yep. Now's a great time to do that.
We have this time.
I don't think I've seen that. Yep, so take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney here in Nashua, representing the applicant this evening. My usual thing is when there's four members, you don't have a full board, I object to proceeding. However, I will proceed based upon the ordinances in Nashua as they exist. If you look at the first page of what the handout that I gave you, it shows that there's a little finger that goes up next to the abutting property owner. That is shown in more detail on the second page, even though you can, a lot of trees. What this is, is a, the motors for the pool, for the cleaning of the pool and so forth, are in this particular little enclosure. I'd like to give you a little history so we could... This enclosure was done, at best that we can figure out, sometime in the early seventies, maybe even late sixties, when the pool was first put in, this was put in there. The zoning ordinance changed, as we all know, in nineteen seventy-six. The city has no records of an application or building permit for this building, for this little enclosure. The city planning department through COTR has indicated that there should be no problem with this, but they have no record of it. Our problem came is when the bank looked at the records, they said, well, you don't have a building permit for that. So until you get a variance or something to show us, we're not going to give you a mortgage. The end result is we lost the mortgage, we lost our interest rate, and we're here before you because of that. The city has, there's a letter in the public file that has no problem with this. It's been existing for a long time. The third page is the neighbor's letter. He's had it for a long time. There's no problem with it as far as he's concerned. So the reason we're here before you is because of some problems with mortgaging the property that banks have brought this up. Even though, if I was asked, I would say that the city has given a letter indicating that they have no problem with this, this goes back. No one knows how long, but we know that it's at least in the early seventies that was going beyond. It's not something that is going to interfere with anybody's property. The abutting property owner exists there. It's a small piece of property. As you can see in the second page, the trees almost engulf it. Its sole purpose is really to hide some of the motors that run the pool pump and so forth so that, to that extent, it helps making the property more attractive. I'd like to say a lot more about it, but that's it.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Prunier? We have no questions. You silenced us all.
I hope this continues all night.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed, I guess we'll call it, shed at fifty-five Wood Street? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter? Anybody want to jump in? Mr. Shaw?
I'm fine with it. I was main, the main thing I wanted to get out of tonight was just like kind of why we were here. And so Attorney Prunier answered that question for me already, so it makes sense. And I think this is one of these situations where it's kind of just basically more or less take care of the paperwork. I don't see, you know, if there was, because there was an issue from the neighbor at fifty-seven, or there was something that indicated this is really causing a problem, but the long-term existence and everything else about it, I'm very comfortable with it.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher?
I agree. Pre-existing condition, and I got really nothing else to add to Mr. Shaw's comments.
Mr. Lionel?
I have nothing to add.
It's been there forty-five to fifty years, and you can't see it from the street because the yard kind of slopes down, it's kind of cut into the yard and...
You can't even see it from the other, from the adjoining property because it's no higher than the fence.
I mean, we're not going to have, we have no interest in pursuing any code enforcement actions on it.
And my thought is the same. The only thing I have to add is when I went to take a look at it, I agree with Mr. Falk. You can't see it from the street. You know, the little variance sign was up, so I knew I was at the right place. Other than that, I wouldn't have been sure if I was there. But, so I'm okay with it. Mr. Lionel, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. See if I can remember how to do this. Okay, would like to make a motion. The owner is the Rita Senical Revocable Trust. The address is fifty-five Wood Street. The request is a variance to encroach nine feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback to maintain an existing shed. This is in the RA zone, and the setbacks are listed in code section one ninety sixteen, table sixteen dash three. The shed has existed for many, many years. It's, the variance is needed to enable the continued use of the property. There's no good reason to take down the shed or to make it meet the setback requirement. It's within the spirit of intent of the ordinance. It's been there for many, many years with no complaints. The city doesn't care. The neighbors don't care. It's not contrary to the public interest in that sense. And it would be substantial justice to the homeowner to allow the variance.
Thank you. A motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Shaw, any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion? A show of hands in favor? So that's unanimous, so that's approved. And I know you know the thirty day window of appeal. And with that, I will close the public hearing on case number two and open the public meeting on case number three, which is two eighty-five West Hollis Street Realty. LLC is the owner. The applicant is, oh, I'm sorry. The address is two eighty-five West Hollis Street. And this is a request for a use variance to convert, convert the use of a building from professional office to single-family residential. It's in the GB zone in Ward four. Good evening again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices in Nashua, New Hampshire. And I'm here representing the applicant this evening. And again, I would like to renew my objection to proceeding with less than the full board, but I will proceed and go ahead with it, just so I can protect my appeals. This is a house that was, that's been built in the late sixties. It's been there for an awful long time. In nineteen seventy-six, the zoning ordinance was changed, in which it put it into the business section. It stayed, I'm going from memory and for the best I can get from historic perspective from the people that seem to know about it, is that it stayed as a house for a very long time. And then it became, the last I knew, it became in the nineties. A real estate broker.
Air salon, then a real estate.
Yeah, okay. And that's what it came. After the real estate brokers left, the applicant tried to sell it again as a, or rent it again as a business. Could not. The only concern, the only applications that he had or people that are interested were people that wanted it as a home. Fact is, the potential buyer of this thing, if this is approved this evening, is here this evening with his mother, that they would like it just as a home. It's one of those pieces of property that could go either way depending upon what the market is at the time. And the market for office space is, hasn't been there. It is, on the other hand, next to a automotive pots dealer. Dunkin' Donuts is a little further down, another block down. But at the present time, the only interest has been, is been for a residential house, which it was when it started, when the zoning, when it was built. And that's what they'd like to return to. And that's what we're here, this season. There are no going to be any exterior changes, so there's not going to be any diminution of value of the surrounding properties, which are commercial on one side anyways, residential on the other side. It's just one of those properties that is very unique. It could go either way. I could be here this evening trying to say, I want this to be commercial, but it's not big enough, or the purpose of the property is not there. And they'd like to keep it as a residential unit. There's a buyer for it that wants to buy it and stay there and use it as a house.
All right.
Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Attorney Prunier? You've silenced us once again.
It's my night, you know. I don't think I'm going to have any abutters, and I've got nothing to say, too much on all these things. It is what it is.
We're saving them up for your next one. We're saving them up for your next one.
Oh, I, it's, I'm sure. I'm sure, Ms. Lionel.
All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Mr. Lionel?
I don't have a problem with this. I guess the only issue, the issue is that it's now in a zone that doesn't permit single-family houses. And if these people want it as a single-family house and they're happy with its location, I don't, I don't see what the issue is.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I have no issues with it. Seems odd, but, you know, it is what it is. So I don't have a problem with it as far as, you know, in this forum. I don't have any issues with it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with it. I mean, the other thing is, it is right up against the RA zone. So it's not like we're talking about this plop down in the middle of a GB zone or something like that where it would not at all have any connection to surrounding neighborhoods. So I think just kind of from that perspective, to me, that is also very helpful in terms of this. So it's, it almost seems like, again, kind of the opposite way of the way a lot of this stuff seems to go. But, and even Attorney Prunier noted, that it feels like this is one of those spots that you could easily be arguing either way. Somebody could be arguing for the other side of West Hollis Street here to take a residential and convert it to some sort of commercial use. I think we're just at very much a transitional part of these neighborhoods and these areas.
Thank you. Yeah, my thoughts, I'm supportive of the application. I mean, it's interesting when I go look at it, and I think it looks more like a house than a business. And to what you said, it's right on the border. And I don't see any issue with it reverting back to a home. I mean, and also, to me, it looks like it'll be a fine functioning home. Is it a busy street? Yeah. Is there a business on the left side of it? Yeah. But it could, to me, be a fine home. It has a driveway you can pull in and turn around and pull out on the busy West Hollis Street. I think it'll be an okay home, so I see no reason to deny. So anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, two eighty-five West Hollis Street Realty. The address is two eighty-five West Hollis Street. And the request is for a variance to convert the use of a building from professional office to single-family residential. And this is in the GB zone. The zoning restriction as applied does interfere with the landowner's reasonable use of the property. In this case, some of the unique aspects of this property is that it was, by all appearances and accounts, built as a single-family home quite some time ago, and then was converted to business and commercial usage. It is immediately adjacent to the RA zone with other residential properties. So the usage in this area is such that it's very much, again, a transitional set of zoning districts. There's, it should be with... There's, it should be with, this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no testimony one way or the other, but the board does not believe there'll be any negative effect on surrounding property values. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, and I move to approve this application.
Motion on the table to approve. I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. That's four nothing, so that's approved. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number three. We all good to keep going? All right. Moving right along, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number four. The owner is Frank Lekakos. The address is Six Broad Street. The description is requesting a variance to encroach six feet into the ten-foot required front yard setback, and that's on Jones Court. And the request is to construct an attached storage garage. The zoning district is split local business RB zone.
Again, for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices in Nashville, New Hampshire, representing the applicant this evening. And again, I'm making my objection to the fact I'm proceeding with less than the full board and preserving my objection. Mr. Lionel doesn't know that I did this for years and even tried to change the ordinance, and someday we'll probably get it changed, but at the present time. This is a piece of property, and knowing that all of you go out and look at the.
You could pull that mic out if you wanna.
Yeah, thanks.
Do a little karaoke there.
All of you go out and look at these properties for, when they come before you. This is on Jones Court, which for most people in Nashville, if you ask where Jones Court is, most people don't know. I've been involved with various pieces of property on Jones Court, so I'm somewhat familiar with it. Jones Court comes off of Broad Street up in this particular area. The trust, the applicant owns all of this property here on Broad Street and the apartments on the other side, all along Jones Court, and owns the vacant piece of property that's in the rear of the building, the long piece of property. What he is trying to do, would like to do, is put up a garage that he can store his equipment, his backhoe, his trucks, and so forth for the winter instead of having to, which he stores there now during the winter, and it gets snowed on and he has to clean it up, so he'd rather put it, put it inside. This is a dual-zone area. We were trying to, Carter and I, to figure out whether I had to come here for a use or just a dimensional requirement. If it was just for apartments, for car storage, I don't think we need to be here, but it's for equipment that is storage. So we were trying to take the safe way, just coming before you, and saying that we like this for, a garage for equipment. The rear setback is seven feet, which is required by the zoning ordinance. It's the front setback that is the problem. We only have four feet along what we're proposing for the building. The other building that is already constructed is three and a half feet off of Jones Court. My client has asked me to see what could be with Jones Court, since he owns all the property on both sides of it, of what could be done with it. The problem is that, right now, the only way I can think about doing this is having to come before you and asking for a variance to have buildings not on a public way. I don't know if we're gonna do that, but at the present time, my client owns, as I say, the properties on both sides of Jones Courts, and in the wintertime, he plows Jones Court, not the city, even though it's a public street. He plows it, and he plows the sidewalks in front of, of the particular buildings. This building will be in the rear, so it'll be pretty much out of sight of anyone coming along Broad Street. It's gonna be a garage, garage, and for the storage of his equipment. It not gonna ask any more traffic to the area because the equipment's already there. It will take out the equipment from being out in the open into a garage, so it's out of view, and to that extent, would be better for the area. As you saw when you went out, this is a big wide-open area in the rear that he owns, and he would like to do something with it. One of it is the, putting the garage. I'd be glad to answer any questions instead of going on.
Questions for Mr. Prunier? Mr. Shaw?
I just wanna make absolutely sure I understand. So there's, from what I count, there's actually appears to be five different lots on Jones Court here, and the applicant owns all five of those.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I caught that, because at first I thought you were just describing kind of the open parking, the rest, the remaining part of six and not the other last lot there, so. So the proposal is to maintain the required setback, rear setback, although I don't know if that's, yeah, that is a rear setback.
This is an interesting lot.
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw, maybe I'll let Carter explain it to you, why we're in this situation, because we tried to work on this for a while, and.
Well, it's actually a corner lot.
Yeah.
It's got Broad Street and Jones Court front and to, so a corner lot has two fronts and two sides. So it would be the front yard, where the front of the garage would be. The front yard setback is ten feet. It meets it in the, on the side and in the back with seven feet, so it's just really the variance for the front of the building.
Right. So I guess what, so your proposal is to meet that seven-foot setback in the back?
That's correct.
However, the primary part of this is the encroachment into the front setback on Jones Court. So what, what was considered regarding, I guess, the options as far as the depth of this structure? Because it looks like it's thirty-six feet proposed, right? So I don't know if that was investigated. So if the, if the depth of the structure itself were shorter, thirty-two feet, let's say, there'd be less encroachment. How, what does that do, if anything, to the usage of this, the intended use?
It would impair with some of the equipment that he wants to put into it and take away from the purpose of the, we, we tried to make the building as small as we could from there, on this spot, the width of it, to try not to come into anymore, and probably wouldn't be coming before you with four feet if it wasn't for the fact that Jones Court is not used. It's a public way, but it's not a public way, and it's really a public way only to about up into this area, and it's, this part of it is not a public way. Sometimes Carter and I spend a lot of time trying to play devil's advocate with each other to try to see what we could do to make it. And because there's, there's an expense being paid doing this thing and so forth, trying to protect a client and trying to make it so that we don't have any problems with the city, that's why we're before you, because we feel that this is one of those cases because of the property, its location, the side, the width of the property, everything else, makes it kind of unique, and what we're trying to do is, is not, it's not a manufacturing facility. It's a takeaway from the view of the neighbors, the backhoe, the trucks, and so forth, and put them away. So does, takes away from the neighbors, but it also helps my client in the wintertime, he can go into a truck that doesn't have to be brushed off and take the snow off and do the stuff with it. And it's, we're not bringing something new to the area, it's already there.
Yeah, I just, and I do totally understand where you're coming from, and I think, you know, if you work with that thirty-six feet as your minimum requirement, your only other option to try to have less encroachment into this front would be to have it in that rear or side setback, which is gonna be more impactful to other properties owned by somebody else. So in many regards, this seems like the best alternative has been considered and is being presented. I just wanted to make sure I understood that, you know, kind of the context.
You understand. And when I, when he came, my client came to me with his handwritten drawing, I said, you know, really, we need something because, that surveyor does so that we have the right measurements, because I don't wanna go to the zoning board and say, there's four feet here, and next thing you know, there's only two feet. Or there's seven feet in the rear, and really, there's only four feet. So I, the whole, I wanted him to, I told him he had to spend a little money to make sure that what we were doing was correct and what we were representing was correct.
And you know, we definitely appreciate and, and find that these kind of drawings and survey, you know, plans are extremely helpful to understand these situations, because it can get abstract very quickly, or like you know, the uncertainties or vagaries of what, you know, somebody thinks they know where the line is.
It's sometimes difficult, Mr. Shaw, getting people to spend some money because they're really not big developers or they're not, but when you're going to spend some money, you better make sure that what you're representing and what you want is correct. And this is why, on these occasions, I try to tell my clients, it's well worth the money to make it exact, so that when it comes time to build it and you go to the city, and the city goes out and takes a sidewalk and says, hey, that's only four feet, you know, and you got your foundation, and it doesn't make sense, so it's.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, did you?
Yeah, I'll agree with Attorney Prunier. We did meet and talk about this quite some time, and even with tracing paper and trying to figure out whereabouts, how this would fit in, and we all thought it was better that, you know, the encroachment is into his own property, it's not onto a neighbor's property, which we thought was a more optimal situation, because, you know, he owns the property on the other side, so he's only, he'd only be impacting himself, himself, so.
Which was my.
Yeah, exactly. That's what we all thought, too.
The other thing I observed is the existing building is three and a half feet from Jones Court, so the proposed design would actually look better than if it were shifted or narrowed considerably. And that building is much older, too.
I think that's a very important point in that, when I went to look at it, is what the applicant is asking, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't any more encroachment than what's in the building already in front of it. And so you've already got that encroachment that's been there for decades, and this essentially matches that, which to me is a special condition of the property. It's not really a question, I'm just, well, just to put that out. Mr. Shaw?
And the other thing is, it also has more encroachment into that side yard setback or what appears to be the rear yard. So, so this actually is, I mean, that part isn't compliant, isn't fully compliant, whereas this will be, so.
At least on one side, right. Any other questions for Mr. Prunier? All right. There's no opposition on record or here, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Maybe I'll throw out my opinion first, if you don't matter. I'm supportive of it. I guess another point is, you know, in, a lot of times when we've had properties in this area, businesses that are bordered by homes, you know, there always seems to be some opposition, and my thought is that this proposed structure is more in concert with the homes behind it, because what happens now is there's equipment, and there's parking, there's headlights, there's noise. My expectation is if this building were to go in, it would just be the back of the building, and it would be much quieter for the butters on the backside, which wasn't spoken of tonight, but it's just a thought I had, but I'm supportive of it as it is. Mr. Boucher?
I support the application, for all the reasons you said, and that was spoken, and I think it actually will enhance that, that street, right? I think it'll look better, it'll look cleaner, more organized, and as far as the encroachment, you know, again, it's, I think it's a unique piece of property, and like I said, it helps that, that the applicant owns pretty much the whole street.
Yeah. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I fully concur with what you guys just said, and appreciate the point you made about the, for those rear butters, that they will actually probably be less impacted ultimately with the structure going in, so I hadn't thought about it in that way, so I think that's a further, further positive in this.
Mr. Lionel?
I agree. I like that, you know, visually from the perspective of Jones Court, it will look like, it won't look any worse than the existing building, same, pretty much the same distance. So, and I agree that the residents and the neighbors would probably prefer having a garage there than having the open equipment.
Would you like to hazard a motion?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Frank Lekakos. I got that, probably mangled that. Address is Six Broad Street. The request is a variance to encroach six feet into the ten-foot required setback, front yard setback on Jones Court to construct an attached storage garage. This is an unusual property with an existing, existing building that already is in the, inside the setback. The desire is to build a garage to shelter existing equipment, and there's been a great attempt to put this together so that it did meet all the setbacks, and that was not possible. This is really the only way to make it work. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We think that it will actually make the surrounding parcels perhaps look more valuable. It's definitely not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be served. It is in the LB RB zone, and Code Section is one ninety-sixteen, Table sixteen-three for the setbacks.
I second that motion. Any discussion on the motion to approve?
I'd just like to note, I mean, we had it certainly in plenty of the previous discussion, but just also the fact that the applicant and owner owns all the other properties on this street, so no opposition there, and certainly any, any of the impact is, is on the same owner. So that is also further, I think, reason to see this as no negative impact to other properties.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor of the motion, so that's approved. Good luck with that garage. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number four. Good evening, Mr. Prunier. We have two sets of minutes in our package. Are we good to keep going over this right now? Okay. First is June thirteenth. I just wanted to point out, there was a correction I discussed with Mr. Falk that I asked for, and that is on page sixteen, in the middle, under where it says, "Seconded by Ms. Vitale." The way it's worded right now, I think, is a little unclear as to whether the board stipulated a privacy fence was added, but Mr. Falk clarified that in the discussion, we did stipulate a privacy fence, and he has made an amendment.
Yeah, I made a slight amendment to the minutes, and I basically added another sentence onto what Mr. Courier said, and even in our approval letter that we sent out to the applicant, that was one of the stipulations as well. I think I gave you that in the email as well, so I think they're all, we're all set with it, so.
So there is that amendment, which, which clarifies that we stipulated a privacy fence. I didn't have any other amendments to the June thirteenth minutes. Did anybody have any other concerns or clarifications?
That was actually the only thing I noticed in here. I actually.
Oh, good.
It was a little odd.
Yeah, it didn't make, I was like, well, was it or wasn't it?
Yeah. Thank you for, yeah, digging into that also. I guess I'll make a motion to approve the June thirteenth minutes with that one amendment we just discussed. Is there a second to that motion? To approve these?
I wasn't here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's fine, yeah.
I mean, we, but, you know, I know we've kind of had different practices on this. I think at some point the board is, can still act as a whole. You know, oftentimes our practice has been to only mostly have the members that were in attendance. If you wanna do that, it's only the two of you, which I don't know if that's appropriate, so I would suggest either we all vote or you wait until the next meeting.
I agree we all vote.
I, I think that, I mean, if, if, if you've, you aren't there, if you've read through that, that was the only issue, I, I think I'm okay with taking a vote on it now, and if you want to abstain, Mr. Lionel, you could, or if you didn't have an issue, it's your purview.
I mean, I read through the minutes.
So, I, I guess we're going to go ahead and take a vote. We have seconded a vote of, to approve the minutes of June 13th with the one amendment. It is unanimous, so that carries. We also have the minutes from June 27th. Did anybody have any questions, concerns, or amendments to that? I did not have any myself. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 27th, 2017, as presented, seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any show of hands in favor? And that's unanimous. So, that takes care of our minutes. We have an agenda for the next meeting, which is July, that date.
25th.
25th, thank you. So, we're looking for regional impact for the July 25th agenda.
I saw none.
Mr. Shaw sees no regional impact. Mr. Lionel sees no regional impact. I don't see any regional impact. Mr. Boucher?
No.
No, so that's unanimous, no regional impact for the July 25th agenda. Is there any other business before the board? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:42, seconded by Mr. Shaw. All in favor? So, with that, we're, we're adjourned.